All right, welcome to the warrant hearing for the annual town meeting scheduled for April 1st, 2023 at 1:00 PM at the Bukea School. The, uh, in attendance at this joint meeting of the FinCom and the Select Board on this evening, March 27th, commencing at 7:09, is from the Select Board Gary Cheeseman and...
Diane Bucow.
Call the Finance Committee meeting to order. A roll call, Jim Purdy.
Deirdre Perotti.
Jeff Calder.
Sounds like we're on mute.
Scott, you're on mute.
No, are we on mute? Do you have audio on us? I'm just getting texts saying that nobody can hear us.
Yeah, it says, uh, says we're muted.
And Scott Schoenberger is present.
So we're unmuted now?
Were we muted?
We were muted, start again.
All right, we'll try again.
Okay.
So, uh, welcome to the warrant hearing for the annual town meeting to be held April 1st, 2023 at 1:00 PM at the Bukea School. Calling the Select Board to order this Monday evening, March 27th at 7:09 PM. In attendance, Gary Cheeseman.
Diane Bucow.
Call the Finance Committee meeting to order. A roll call vote, a roll call attendance, Jim Purdy.
Deirdre Perotti.
Jeff Calder.
That's Schoenberger.
Okay, uh, you want, do the honors of introducing...
Yes, we're just going through the articles.
Introducing the process this evening? I'd be happy to. This evening, um, the Finance Committee with the Select Board will present the articles, uh, uh, will read the article and then have an opportunity, um, to discuss it briefly and then open up after each article to the folks who want to ask questions. Um, so we will go through Article 1 through 21. Uh, joining us tonight is also Roger Smeridge, uh, moderator of town, uh, of the town meeting. And, uh, I'm, I'm going to, uh, ask Scott in just a moment to explain the so-called consent calendar or the consent agenda and how that will work, uh, for this meeting as well as at the town meeting. When we get to the budget, uh, the budget article, Article 7, uh, we will discuss some of the budget, um, ask for some questions, uh, go through some of the detail, but my, my thought is that given that at the town meeting, we will have the opportunity for holds and further discussion that this evening on the budget, yes, we, we will discuss it, but, um, we have the other articles to try to get through as well. So I just want to make that as a, as an introduction. Roger, if you could, uh, discuss the consent calendar and maybe move forward with articles, uh, the 1 through 6 on the actual consent article consent calendar and how that, how that works.
Yes, uh, good evening, members of the Select Board, members of the FinCom and members of the public, uh, Roger Smeridge, Town Moderator. So this year, uh, on the warrant we're proposing or the Select Board has proposed moving forward with two sets of the articles as a consent calendar, the first one being Articles 1 through 6 and the second being Articles 12 through 15. The way a consent calendar works, uh, is if I, as the Town Moderator, make the determination that I, uh, think it's unlikely that any significant debate or discussion, uh, will be necessary on a set of articles, uh, I can propose to the town meeting that we proceed with those articles as a consent calendar. Uh, I give them, the town meeting, the opportunity to, um, call out one or more of the articles that's proposed to be part of the consent calendar as I read through, uh, them in summary fashion. Uh, if five or more voters, uh, ask that a article be taken out of the consent calendar, it will be done and it'll be considered, uh, separately in the ordinary course. Otherwise, whatever remains in the consent calendar goes forward on a single motion vote, uh, to approve those articles as printed in the warrant. Um, so, starting with Articles 1 through 6, which, uh, I understand, uh, the Select Board and FinCom have decided to put on the warrant, uh, as they relate to certain tax exemptions, uh, that are, uh, available to towns under the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, uh, and all six of those articles relate to such statutory tax exemptions. Uh, it's my impression that those six articles, uh, absent the, uh, call of the voters to take any of them out of consent can be acted on through a consent calendar. With that, Jim, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. So Roger, uh, the intent here is that we will read each one of the consent articles, correct?
Yes, so they would be, uh, read through in, sometimes in, in summary fashion. Here, the articles are relatively short, so we, uh, if it's, uh, the preference of the FinCom to read them in full, that can be done as well. Uh, and then after reading through them, as I said, if anyone calls for one or more of the articles to be pulled out of consent and five voters, uh, rise in support of that, uh, that call, then the article that has been called will be taken out of the consent calendar. Otherwise, the remaining articles, uh, proceed to a vote on a consent basis.
Okay, thank you, Roger. So we'll read through them in full, 1 through, 1 through 6, uh, and see if there's any questions at that point. So, uh, I'm gonna pass the articles along the three of us here and Scott. So I'll start and then we'll just rotate through, okay? I'll read Article 1, and these are all taken from Mass. General Law, Chapter 59. So what we are doing is adapting Chapter 59, basically, of the Mass. General Laws. Article 1, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17F, to increase the exemption amount available in Clause 17D to certain minors, surviving spouses and seniors over the age of 70 by an amount not to exceed the increase in the cost of living as determined by the Consumer Price Index for such a year, or take any action relative thereto." That's Article 1. Deirdre, could you read Article 2, please?
Sure. Article 2, Adoption of Last Paragraph of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause "To see if the town will vote to accept the last paragraph of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22F, which reduces the domicile requirements for otherwise eligible individuals from five years to one year for the exemptions available pursuant to clauses 22nd, 22ndA, 22ndB, 22ndC, 22ndD, 22ndE, and 22ndF, or take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you. That's Article 2. Jeff, Article 3.
Article 3, Adoption of General Law, 59, 5 Clause, 41C, 1/2. "To see if the town will vote to adjust the following eligibility and asset limits for the senior tax exemption available under the provisions of General Law, 59, 5 Clause, 41, C, 1/2, by 1, increasing the amount of the exemption from 10% to 20% of the average assessed value of all Class 1 parcels within the town. Number 2, reducing from 70 to 65 the requisite age of eligibility. Number 3, reducing the residency requirement for eligibility from 10 years to 5 years. And 4, utilizing income limits on a household basis rather than, uh, on a single applicant basis for real estate tax exemption, or take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you, Jeff. Scott, could you read Article 4, please?
Yes, Article 4, Adoption of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 57, Senior Circuit Breaker Exemption. "To see if the vote, to see if the town will vote to accept General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 57, to allow the Board of Assessors to appropriate monies for and grant property tax rebates to eligible seniors in an amount not to exceed annually the amount of the income tax credit set forth under General Law, Chapter 62, Section 6K, the so-called senior circuit breaker, or take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you, Scott. I will start again reading Article 5, Adoption of General Law, 59, Chapter 5C and 1/2, "To increase property tax exemptions." And it reads, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C and 1/2, for the purpose of increasing the real estate tax exemptions by 100% for all persons who qualify for property tax exemptions under clauses." And I'll read these, 17, 17C, 17C and 1/2, 17D, 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, 37, 37A, 41, 41B, 41C, or 43 of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, or take other, any other action relative thereto. Okay. And the last one, Article 6, Deirdre, could you read that, please?
Article 6, Adoption of Tax Deferral and Have Income Limit Tied to Circuit Breaker. "To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A2, to adopt a higher maximum qualifying gross receipts equal to the amount of income determined by the Commissioner of Revenue for General Law, Chapter 62, Section 6K, the senior tax circuit breaker, not exceeding the amount of income determined by the Commissioner of Revenue for a single person who is not a head of household to be effective for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2023, or take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you. So that's the consent calendar for Articles 1 through 6. The intent of this is to give citizens in town who meet the eligibility requirements of all, of one or more of these articles to have, uh, an exemption or a reduction, basically, in their, in their tax, uh, their real estate tax. These are applied for through the assessor's office, who then understands and reads the, uh, the material they have to, the citizens have to submit, uh, qualifying material to the assessor's office, and then it's reviewed from that point forward. But it's an opportunity for citizens, uh, in the, in, in our town, uh, to possibly get some reduced, uh, tax burden, basically. There's a lot of exemptions in here, there's a lot of a language, but that's the overall intent of this consent calendar, agenda.
Yes, so as we went through and Steve, uh, calculated through currently, uh, the assessor's report that there are 33 using the current portions that we have here that the town adopted several years ago, and what we're doing is expanding, expanding them to the limits of the state law, which are quite restrictive, but it should help some more people qualify.
That's great. Diane.
So on town meeting floor, how will this actually be presented? Will, will you speak and explain that to the people or will Gary stand up and explain?
Well, they're, they're finance articles, if you will, and I, I, I think what we'll do, uh, unless we have a different process that Roger, uh, may present, but I think we'll read through them. Um, I think it'd be very helpful with the assessors to be present to, to talk, because they're familiar with the, uh, with these articles, Diane, so.
So no, what you just said, I think is, is perfect, even just that little bit explaining without detail.
The intent.
The intent. So I just want to make sure that that's explained, not that we just do a consent agenda and not, not really explain to people what they all about.
And we should, uh, also add that we can pre-study the chart in the warrant book towards the end, just before the school section lays out the impacts.
So I guess at this point for Articles 1 through 10, uh, 1 through 6 on the consent agenda, do we see any hands up that, uh, Finance or Gary or, or Steve Pulis or any of the Select Board members might be able to respond to?
Any hands up?
Any hands, Joe?
Any questions?
Tom has his hand up.
And we should add here that Peter Clay, Select Board, joined us at 7:22, we'll call it.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Perfect. So I guess my first question is...
You need to identify full name and address, please.
I'm sorry, uh, my name is Thomas Yee, 12 Eaton Road in Wenham. And my question is, if we increase the potential exemptions for senior citizens, where do the resulting shortcomings get made up by?
So we have in the budget, Tom, a line item called abatements, and year over year, that number has been $195,000. And it's anticipated at this time that we will be able to incorporate the 33 folks that Gary's pointed out, who may be eligible for some of these exemptions into the $195,000. So that's already budgeted in the overall town budget.
Okay, but that would mean if we have additional applicants, then the potential per person abatement is reduced because you're still totaling up the $195,000 in available abatements?
No, that's just...
The overlay is 190.
So the overlay is 190, but...
Okay, sorry.
The numbers that we would expect above and beyond the 33 current participants, we expect will not exceed the $195,000.
Right, right.
These are, you know, relatively small amounts. If you look at the chart, you know, a proposed, uh, exemptions of $180, of $1,200, $2,600, and so forth, so they're not, uh, sizable for each individual. And, uh, with the restrictions placed on it by the state laws, you know, right now we have 33, so we may get some more, but it's not a large number anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other hands, Joe?
No other hands.
Okay. So let's move to, uh, Article 7, and I failed to make a statement about that in that I will give a very brief, a very brief highlighted overview of, of the, of the highlights of the budget. Mr. Pulis is here as Town Administrator as well, uh, if there's any questions, um, and then we'll go to questions from the folks, and we, we may touch upon some, uh, specific , uh, cost centers as well as we go through this. So, Deirdre, you have the article to read.
Article 7, Annual Operating Budget Appropriation, Town and Schools. "To see if the town will determine what sum of money may be necessary to defray the town's expenses for fiscal year 2024, the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024. Including expenses for the town and regional school districts, make appropriations for the same and determine the source thereof, or take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you, Deirdre. A very brief overview of some of the highlights of the budget. So our total budget this year, operating, uh, annual budget, including the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Districts, is, and I'm gonna just round this off a little bit, is $23.11, This budget for fiscal year '24, which starts on July 1, requires no overrides from the schools or no overrides from town operations. The town operations of the $23.117, the town operations constitute $11,290,000. That represents approximately 49% of our share of the budget. The schools represent $11,778,000, which is approximately 51% of the total budget. Just a word about the schools. This year, the schools increased their appropriation to the town of Wenham by $26,215, a very modest amount, slightly less than a quarter of a percentage point. The schools budget, Wenham shared now of the regional budget with Hamilton, I think it's, Wenham folks always ask this, is 33.8% of the total school budget, and that's approximately a point less than our, the current year that we're, we're, we're working in. And I've been asked before, the Essex Aggie and Tech School is funded at $191,000, and that is a separate funding, uh, point, uh, a, a separate funding for that school, separate from the regional schools. Growth represents, uh, about 3.1% of revenues, or, uh, 685 over the current fiscal year. That includes the maximum levy limit of, uh, levy limit of 20 million, uh, 20.4 million, local receipts of 1.1, net state aid of 268, water revenues and so on, and we do have an apportionment settlement with Hamilton of about $890,000. So, on the expense side, just real quickly, the, the town, uh, projects expenses of $11.3 million or an increase of approximately $622,000 over the current year. Our expenses are driven by, as in the past years, salary and wage increases inclusive of contractual obligations, health insurance premiums, and other employee, uh, employee benefits. Trash management fees have increased approximately 10%. Uh, we are still mandated under the Reserve Officer Training of the Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission to train, I believe, three officers going into '24. We have continued inflationary pressures on supplies, materials, utilities, and fuels, and we increase our OPEB, our Other Post-Employment Benefit Health Insurance for Retired Employees, by about $10,000. We've also included in this budget, uh, an additional full-time firefighter, an additional full-time police officer, and an addition of a part-time assistant in the town clerk's office and a part-time assistant in the accounting office. We have free cash this year of approximately just over $1 million. As in the past years, we stand to the, uh, best fiscal practice of not using free cash to fund operations, and we're using free cash this year to purchase $445,000 worth of, uh, one-time capital equipment, which we'll outline in, in one of the agenda items here, one of the, uh, articles. And we maintain from that, as in past fiscal years, a quarter of a million, $250,000 in our reserve account, and this year, for the first time in several years, we're adding $50,000 to a stabilization account, which puts into reserves of just over $500,000, which is good fiscal practice and for unanticipated costs and difficulties as they come up. So, uh, the tax rate, what's, what's, what's this impact on the task, tax rate of this proposed budget? So our current, our current rate, our mill rate, if you will, is 1735. It's projected to expand to $17.92. So, uh, that plus 57 cents per thousand for a home assessed at $700,000, the tax rate would, would be impacted by approximately $400 or annually, or $100 quarterly. So that's just a very brief overview of, 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 uh, the budget and where we're going and what we're trying to get to and, and how we're trying to, uh, move into the operations. If there are any questions, I did highlight, I did highlight with Mr. Pulis, uh, a few areas that there may be questions about, and one that came to my attention, uh, was the town, town hall. And so embedded, because it does have a significant increase in the budget book, uh, so the town hall is driven this year by a few, few, a few things. We have a, uh, we have a reserve for salaries, pretty much contracted salaries projection for the library essentially, of 20,000 in that town hall, uh, department. We have in that also a utility reserve. So in discussing the utility reserve, it's, uh, been pointed out to us, uh, Steve, Mr. Pulis has, has given us information that we're looking at potentially a 40% increase. So the plan at this point is to put aside $100,000 to be able to track the utility reserves over and above the existing budgets of utility in each one of the departments. So that does drive, drive that particular number. Uh, yeah, so that's one of the ones that, uh, I, I thought might be helpful.
Do you have a hand, though?
Okay, a hand.
Trudy Reed.
Trudy Reed, yep.
Hi, um, Trudy Reed from 53 Thompson Field Road. Just wondering if you could explain a little bit more about, um, you just mentioned a part-time person for the town clerk's office and a part-time person for the finance department.
Right.
In the detailed sheets that were on, posted to the website, it indicates that it's a full-time position for the finance department. That's question one. And number two, um, no, I'll wait for you to answer that one first for me.
Yeah, let's do one at a time, I'll forget the first one.
My very gutting, so.
Yep, and that's accurate, and during the budget process, uh, we explained that the salary line will live in the finance department in that we're currently drafting the job description, but it is expected that the person will live in the clerk's office for approximately four hours per week at a set, you know, set amount of time, not as and as needed, so to ensure that there is coverage on a weekly basis and to maintain that they stay current with the clerk's duties, so that in the event that the clerk does, is absent, has a seminar, educational seminar, sick vacation or any other unplanned time off, that there is somebody that, uh, is up to date on the day-to-days of the clerk's office and can, can jump in as needed.
So with it, so that's not really part-time. I mean, that's four hours a week, that's very little to put into a town clerk's office, especially during elections. So I'm, I think what I just heard is, it could be more, depending on if there's vacation conferences, sick time, that maybe that person would be in the office more often during those absences?
Right, uh, that's outside the four hours per week, so.
And, and why are we putting another full-time person in the finance department office? Because of, as I, as I heard in one of the meetings in the box, Wenham's population has only grown by 2% over the last 10 years. So we're not having extremely large numbers of tax payments being made, payroll, we don't have that many more employees, payroll can't be that time-consuming, and now that you're closing on Fridays, and as a practice when I was there in town hall, on Tuesdays, a couple of the finance department office would leave early because they felt like there wasn't a need for everybody to be there on Tuesday evenings. So if the hours are decreasing, the work doesn't seem to be increasing, why are we putting a full-time person in that office?
Well, um, look, a couple points, the, one, uh, the hours are not decreasing, all 40 hours a week, uh, employees stay at 40 hours a week, consistent with how, how it is now. Uh, two, the finance office has gone through, um, you know, a number of turnovers over the, the last several years. I don't think, you know, is it anybody's fault or anything, but I think that there is areas of finance that have been unable to, um, be getting to over, over time, so we have laps in reconciliations that need to be done, and it's essentially playing catch-up, uh, perpetually, so we're trying to staff it appropriately and to keep up to date with all the expanding Mass. General Finance laws and, uh, federal funds and reconciliations that are required. mass general finance laws, and federal funds, and reconciliations that are required of the department.
So, again, one more time, so you're only allowing four hours per week for that person to be in the town clerk's office, who's going to be a new town clerk. And as I presented last year, all, there's been many responsibility changes increased to the town clerk. So, you just said that finance department's getting more increase because of mass general laws, so isn't the town clerk's office?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
The increase in the clerks, the clerk, if you look at the clerk the last year to this year, the net increase in staffing has, the net change in staffing has increased, not decreased. In addition, we incorporated $15,000 into the clerk's budget for additional consulting resources that can support the new town clerk, acknowledging that there's going to be a steep learning curve.
Thank you.
Steve, my understanding was also that this new assistant will, there'll be some task shifting, that some of the financial tasks from the clerk's office will actually go to that person?
Right, and that, right, that's kind of how I imagine it, that the, right, the finance staff would be probably most competent to do the finance-related duties in the clerk's office. But again, if the clerk sees it differently, there is those, you know, those three or four hours that they can, they can use differently. But I, you know, I kind of foresee it as taking off the, you know, the reconciliation for online payments, cash turnover, accounts payable for death certificates, birth certificates, marriage certificates, and the other processing such as dog tags, and plus some pawn stickers, and various other tasks that come through the clerk's office that are a little bit outside of your typical clerk's duties.
You have a second hand up?
Yes.
Susan. Hi, Susan.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I have a question on the legal expenses. They've gone from $60,000 to $100,000. Why they jumped?
So, yep.
Jim, she needs to say her name and address.
Excuse me?
She needs to say her name and address.
Oh, Susan, could you say your name and address, please, Susan?
Sure, Susan Mailen, 18 Burnham Road.
Thank you. So, two years ago, we had, two years, two fiscal years ago, we had $90,000 in that line. When Tom was here, Tom Younger, the former interim, he negotiated a retainer fee of 60,000 to see how that might work for us. That retainer fee was, was pushed beyond the 60,000, and we have looked now at what drives, what drives the, and I got my notes here, if I can find them, what drives the legal expenses going forward to get us to the 100,000? So, in that, we have bargaining, we have contractual agreements, we have the town meeting, we have routine legal questions as to personnel issues, legal questions as to operational issues that come to our attention. All of those together, combined, to drive what we think is a reasonable amount going into, from essentially, Susan, from the old 90,000 to the 100,000 going into FY '24. Steve, do you have anything to add to that, or Gary?
Gary.
Well, we need to consider, too, that in the upcoming year, we expect that we're going to have significant costs if the Pulte Homes project comes about.
Oh, right, right.
We'll certainly have expenses concerning the MBTA community.
Yep.
And as we look forward to a rewrite of the bylaws, the technical bylaws in the planning board sections, that that will increase legal expenses as well significantly.
The first, just to add, the personnel bylaws are currently being redrafted, as well as all the policies. All have to be reviewed by town council.
So, we'll be tracking these, we'll be tracking the expenses going forward and see how we do. It's, it's a combination of fees, a fee structure, as well as a semi, is that right, Steve? Did I understand that a retainer, as well as a fee structure, is that how that?
Right, the retainer covers routine reoccurring costs, which would be like town meeting is essentially about it. And then, anything outside of that, so all labor is addition, additional, all land use is additional, so that would be the MBTA, Pulte Homes, rewriting of the technical bylaws, master plan advisory. And then, and so the only thing really included would be the town meeting, the personnel policy, personnel, personnel policy, personnel bylaw, all that rewriting, redrafting, and updating our employment laws, employee laws are all, is all extra cost.
Okay, is there any plan to mitigate some of these expenses and maybe not pick up the phone so quickly?
Yeah, we're mitigating a lot of expenses. We just negotiated four contracts this year, and of only one, we had to rely on KP Law to help on the negotiating team.
Okay, good, thank you. Is it, can I ask, is anybody else's hand raised?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I'll go after them. Thank you.
Trudy?
Hi, I'm sorry, one more question. Did I see a line item somewhere on the detailed pages for, I think it was $100,000 for special utilities? What is that all about?
Yeah, well, Steve, I can speak to it a little bit, but we're anticipating a 40,000, 40,000, well, maybe, a 40% increase in our utilities from what Steve has picked up and what's been stated from the utilities could look like going into '24. So, we've set aside this 100, so we can track over and above the budgeted utilities in each department. As we hit those marks and exceed that, how much the utilities are impacting for each one of the departments, and we can keep track of that going forward. We may not need the 100. If we don't use the whole 100,000, it'll revert to free cash at the end of the fiscal year. So, that was the intent of that, of that 100,000 reserve, which is a little unusual. I don't think we've used that in the past as much.
Yeah, it's something that I've done before, and it works well, especially with, you know, when there's a lot of unknowns. So, with the economic unknowns and the energy supply chain issues that we're experiencing now, you've got to remember, when we were first going through the budget cycle, really up to, a month or two ago, you're hearing the utilities talking about 60, 70, 80% increases. I decided that based on talking to energy suppliers and the contract rates for 12- and 24-month energy contracts, looking at that, that approximately a 40% increase in the utility reserve would probably be the smartest thing to do, in that now the only way the departments can tap into the utility reserve is to fully expand their utility line item within the departmental budget. So, those, the departmental budget utility line items were unchanged year over year. And this will allow us and the public to review back to actuals, to see how FY '24 carried out. We may be in a situation where all 100 is unspent, falls to free cash, and we'll, you know, make the determination, maybe we'll reduce that to $20,000, depending on the energy outlook, or maybe we remove it entirely. But this is a way to kind of, kind of hedge us against the risk exposure with the volatility in the energy markets.
Thank you.
I don't know if Susan's raising her hand or adjusting her screen.
Yes, I am. Okay. The iron rail, can you tell me what, I have the, I see the expenses, but where is the revenue reflected? And is it like reflected in with excise tax? And approximately, what are you budgeting for iron rail revenue?
The iron rail revenue, before COVID hit, the iron rail revenue was in the neighborhood of approximately 130,000. You may recall this, Susan, it was in that range.
I do, yep.
Yep, yep. And we had a period of time in 2021 where those revenues slipped off, and we were tracking that, and we worked to regain that. In '22, we have seen a full payment of the, of the rents. So, I anticipate, and maybe Jamie can help me with this, but I anticipate in this fiscal year, '23, that we're going to see, we're going to meet our rent, our rent, our rent projection of revenue of approximately 130, is it still in that, in that range? Yep.
And everybody's paid and caught up.
And everyone, and Jamie just said, everyone is paid and caught up. So, there's been some recovery there, certainly.
So, there's no, nobody is in arrears for rent? Everybody has paid everything that they should have up to date?
What I understand, WAGS, which has one of the bigger rents, made efforts in '22. They made some, for two or three months, significant payments to catch up for part of '22 and even back to '21. But Susan, I don't have the exact number in front of me, I'm not going to fudge your number, but they did work at catching up. And I think by the end of '22, Jamie, am I, most, we had mostly caught up with most of them, or where were we at the end of?
They paid large ones on them, and then they decided to move forward and not get any more monies arrears. And then in '22, they were paying their normal amounts, and they're, I think their leases were renewed, and they were upped a little bit for '22, and then for '23, they got another increase in their rents, and they.
They're right on that.
To date.
Yeah.
So, for '22 and '23, yes, they're up to date.
Scott? Steve?
You know, I just want to add that the, that what, you know, what Jim and Jamie is saying is, is true, in that with that, you know, we do have some holes in our revenue source, and I just want to put it out there, that we did put that out to make the town whole, because the town also has holes in its revenue source from excise tax permitting and fees through the pandemic. All related to the pandemic and opera funds was, there wasn't appropriate use to fill those lost revenues, but was voted very low on the survey, so there was not, there was not a lot of support in filling those revenue holes, which could have contributed to our stabilization.
So, is the iron rail revenue reflected in the local receipts number?
Yes, it is, isn't it?
Yep.
Yep, yep.
Okay, and just one other quick question, that I don't bother anybody anymore, has the free cash been certified?
Yes.
1.03?
1.7 and change. I can't remember the exact number, but it's a little over 1.7.
It's been certified at 1.7, Susan.
1.7?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. You had a question over here? Next. That's Article 7, David. We'll get to it, yep. Okay, we can move on to, excuse me, Article 8. Not Article 7, Article 8. Use of free cash. Jeff Calder, please read that, and also then read through for the, for the reading of the areas that we're going to expend the 445,000.
So, Article 8, use of free cash to fund fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash a sum or sums of money to fund the town's FY '24 capital improvement program, including the acquisition, equipping, and all other incidental and related costs as printed below. First item, fire departmental equipment, SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus bottles in an amount of $22,291. Envelope slash exterior slash walls slash downspouts for police station, $25,000. Road capital slash supplement, Chapter 90 funds for paving projects and to cover winter damage in spring, $95,000. Underground storage tank upgrades, DPW fueling, $17,000. DPW 2022 200 slash XP Bandit Industries hand-fed chipper, $49,000. DPW 2023 Chevrolet pickup truck with plow, $60,000. DPW 2023 Chevrolet Trailblazer SUV, $27,489. Police, 2023 Durango slash equipment and markings, $55,098. Police lease payment for third year of the three-year payment plan for the administrative vehicle Chevy, $15,000. DPW year three lease payment on trackless municipal tractor, $31,000. Communications radios grant match, $20,900. Replace front entry door COA, Council on Aging, $3,542. Class A uniforms to outfit the Wenham Police Department Honor Guard Unit and Command Staff Personnel, $8,836. Fire station office layout alteration to maximize available space, $5,000. Police station bathroom renovation, $10,000, for a grand total of $445,156. Or to take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you, Jeff. So, this is the use of free cash that we typically use every year. It's, it's always within that range, four to 600,000. The finance committee met with each department head. We had explanations as to each one of these equipments, pieces of equipment, and we felt that they met the needs of the department for a whole host of reasons, efficiencies, safety, upgrading vehicles or equipment that were at the end of their life, and we felt that that was, they were reasonable requests made to the finance committee. Any questions? Thank you, Joe.
We should add, too, that the finance committee and the, Steve and the administration have really, for the first time, projected out full inventories.
Yes.
And DPW, I think it stretches out 15 years, that we're projecting, as well as a capital plan moving out five years.
Yep. Does anyone have a question? Okay, Zana Yukonovich is not with us tonight, so I will read Article 9, Funding of the Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of 50,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund, or take any action relative thereto. So, this sets aside an additional 50,000 into a reserve account, a little different than the free cash account, but very similar. It does require a vote, Steve, is that correct, by the FinCon? And a two-thirds vote at?
Town meeting.
Town meeting. So, it's.
It's a simple majority.
Oh, simple, simple majority?
No, Article 9, it's down, oh, yeah, simple, oh, simple majority.
Simple majority.
Two-thirds vote to appropriate out of it.
Appropriate, okay.
To spend it.
Yep.
So, we're going to, the plan is, and the intent of this stabilization fund refunding is to assure that the town has in reserves enough money to attend to any unanticipated expenses or emergencies. So, that's the stabilization fund contribution.
Any hands?
Okay, the next article is Article 10, Paying the Prior Year Bills, which is a typical article that we have to attend to at the, at the town meeting. Deirdre has this article.
Article 10, Prior Year Bills, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to pay any unpaid bills. a sum of money to pay any unpaid bills incurred in prior years, or take any other action relative thereto. We have Massachusetts Municipal Association for $320, and Cabot Risk Strategies LLC for $746.89, for a total of prior year bills, $1,066.89.
Okay. And those bills came due because we hadn't received them through the prior fiscal year. We came in late, basically. Is that fair to say, Steve? Accurate to say?
Yep.
Okay. Any question on paying our prior year bills? Okay. Article 11. I'll take Dano's role here tonight. So Article 11, Article to Fund Collective Bargaining Funding Agreements. So let me read through this. Take a drink. To see if the town will vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 150E, Section 7, to fund the cost items of the first fiscal year of collective bargaining agreements between the town and AFL-CIO Council 93, Local 2905, DPW Union, effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025. The Police Benevolent Association of Wenham, MCOP Local 382, quote, police, effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025. The Wenham Call Firefighters Association, effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025. And the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, known as AFSMI, AFL-CIO Council 93, Local 2905. Library, effective July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2026. And as necessary, to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, a sum of money for such purposes, or take any action relative thereto. So we have an obligation as a community to, after agreements and after negotiations, to fund our contracts with our, with our unions. Mr. Pulis with the FinCom has projected what these costs are essentially going to be, and have built them into the FY '24 budget. Not to the exact dollar, but with a fairly conservative estimate of what the contract agreements will require. Steve, do you have anything you want to add to the?
That's, that's a fair point. And also, I think there was some questions directly related to salary reserve in the town hall budget. And that is to, it's in the amount of $20,000, and it's to make whole any of these contracts. Should there be a shortfall in the departmental budget? And that will be a one, one-year thing, so we can get a better handle on all the moving pieces.
Any questions on Article 11, funding our, our employees who are part of the unions? None? Okay, very good. Thank you. So let's see, we're going to enter now into the consent calendar, which we typically do at every town meeting. The 1 through 6 was a little unusual, but 12 through 15, we, we move in this in a consent calendar agenda process, pretty much the last several, at least the last several town meetings. So we'll do the same thing for Article 12, 13, 14, and 15. As we did for Articles 1 through 6, I'll read one and we'll just rotate, we'll rotate through as quickly as possible. So I'll start. Article 13. Cemetery Sale of Lots Transfer.
Need 12.
Article 12.
I skipped ahead one, excuse me. Article 12, Cemetery and Other, I saw cemetery. Cemetery and Other Trust Funds, Article 12. To see if the town will vote to accept the cemetery and other trust funds received in fiscal year '22, as printed in Part 1 of the town report, and on file with the town clerk, or take any action relative thereto. Article 13, Deirdre?
Article 13, Cemetery Sale of Lots Transfer. To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer to transfer the sum of $21,800 from the sale of cemetery lots. Receipts reserved for appropriation account to the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund for the maintenance of the three cemeteries in the town of Wenham, or take any, any action relative thereto.
Article 14, Mr. Calder?
Article 14, Transfer From Water Operating Budget to Water Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $35,000 from the fiscal year '24 water operating budget into the Water Capital Reserve account, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay, Scott? Article 15, Roadwork.
Article 15, Roadwork, Chapter 90 Funding. To see if the town will vote from available funds, a sum of money for work on town funds, subject to conditions detailed by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30, Section 39m, Chapter 149, Section 44J, and Chapter 149, Sections 26 through 27F, said work to conform to the requirements of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. So, thank you, thank you, Scott. Article 12 through 15, as we've read. Typical articles that we always review in a consent process. Are there any questions regarding Articles 12 through 15? By the way, I think Chapter 90 funding, $90,000 has stayed the same for quite a few years, if I remember correctly. It hasn't changed, yeah.
Yeah, so we might add that they're going to have a very substantial addition aid in the fact that the state is planning to do Route 97 this year for us.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
$825,000.
How much is that?
$825,000. It's going to cost to repay.
And that's for all of 97 from Topsfield to Beverly?
Yeah, and, and they're managing the project as well.
And who, who did the fine work of getting that money appropriated to the?
We need to credit our past Representative Brad Hill and Jamie Elsido.
That's great.
As well as Senator Tara.
Thank you.
Bill Tyoc too, and Rich Souza.
So it was a combination of?
So it was a little bit of squeaky wheeling and?
Yep. Combination of our staff and our, and our great state reps and state senator. Good. All right. So Article 16 is the CPA Reservations and Appropriations. Now, I'm a little, a little have to admit, I understand that Rick is gonna, Rick Woodland is going to read this at town meeting. And is?
Yes, you will.
Rick, there you are. Are you, your speaker's off.
Is he unmuted?
At his end.
I'm sorry. Hi, sorry.
Hi, Rick, thank you.
I wasn't anticipating being recognized, so.
Thank you for assisting with the, with Article 16. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So why don't you move forward and walk through that for, for all of us?
Oh, good.
Do you have a worn book in hand? Was not expecting.
Oh, I was.
Oh, I was, okay, so you're not, you're not, okay. You know what, then I will?
We'll read it here.
We'll read it, we'll read it here.
Thank you.
And you can, you have, I suspect in front of you, the appropriations?
I do.
Very good, okay. Let me, let me read the article. And then we'll move on to discussing what you've generously funded. Article 16, To See If The Town Will Vote to Receive and Act Upon a Report From the Community Preservation Committee On the Fiscal Year 2024 Community Preservation Budget, And to Appropriate or Reserve for Later Appropriation Monies For the Administrative Expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. The Payment of Debt Service, The Undertaking of Community Preservation Projects, And All Other Necessary and Proper Expenses for the Year. And to Reserve Additional Amounts Based Upon FY '22 Actual Collections. And to Determine Whether Such Sums Will Be Raised From the Community Preservation Fund, Transferred From Available Funds, Borrowed, Or Any Combination thereof As Follows. So now, Rick?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think what I reviewed this, and I, I think it might be important to give some credit to the Accounting Department and to the Town Administrator's Office, thanking them for, I think, a Herculean task that many have tried and no one's been successful to date by truing up all the different accounts. As I understand it, what we're seeing here in this first, first part of this chart, are corrected balances and amounts being put into those buckets. Am I correct, Steve?
Yeah, that's correct. And I just want to redirect the credit to Jamie Cologne, how she did all the heavy lifting. But yeah, so, I mean, yeah, so the first section here, the first four, if you, if people at home are looking at their, their grid of the CPA appropriations, every year you're going to see true-ups, because you, you enter fiscal year FY '24 with estimated revenues. So you don't know, it's just like a budgeting year for the, the town budget. So every other year, you'll see the true-ups once the books are closed. That's what that is. And the following four are to correct prior ATM calculation errors. So that's the correct appropriations that were moved either in the wrong direction or duplicated. And then the, you know, as you were mentioning, that in conjunction with the, truing up the fund balance resulted in, I think about a $1.7 million increase over the, what was thought to be the balance available to the CPA.
Yeah, so fortunately, through that great work that Jamie and your team did there, we're able to fund the projects that came before us this spring. And, and thank you to all you folks that did that. And then down below, you'll see how we're spending the money. Or how we're requesting the town to appropriate the sums of money. First for our support person here, operating appropriation, and then for the following projects. Do I need to list, go through them? It's fine, I can do that.
That'd be, that'd be great, Rick. Just, yeah, just, just read through them so everyone can hear them.
Sure. And this year, again, we're supporting the debt service for the town hall renovation, which is coming out of the Historic Preservation Fund, as well as part of it coming out of the budgeted reserve. So the, the total there is just over about $115,000. We're proposing to deliver to the Affordable Housing Trust about $600,000 to, to, as they look for new projects in affordable housing in the town of Wenham. At the, with the best information at hand, at the time, we allocated $400,000 out of the general fund to be appropriated for the playing fields as part of the Wenham contribution to the playing fields. And a grant in about $87,255 to the Wenham Museum as they develop a, kind of a segment of a master plan to create kind of a town park, a town common that would be kind of stretching in front of town hall and their facility as well. And make it a little safer for the kids who are out there playing. Also, the West Wenham Park, to create a community gathering space there, a grant of $375,500. And continuing support for the Maplewood Senior Housing Project on Maple Street, coming out of the CPA fund balance at $150,000. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Rick. Let's see if we have any questions from any of the folks attending the meeting tonight? Or on Zoom?
See any, Joe?
Okay. Thank you very much, Rick. We appreciate your stepping in and helping out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Article 17. I guess originally I gave this to myself. All right. Article 17, Borrowing Authorization for Town Capital Improvements. It reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow a sum of money for cost of purchasing or leasing with an option to purchase, and equipping new and/or replacement of capital items for various town departments, including all incidental and related costs. And further, that any contracts for such purposes may be up to or in excess of three years, and that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that the town vote, taken, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of the town to exempt from the limitation on total taxes, meaning a debt exclusion, if you will, imposed under General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21CM, Proposition 2 and 1/2, the amounts required to pay the principal and the interest of the, on the approved, on the borrowing, approved by this vote." So what we will be proposing at town meeting is the following two projects that come under this debt exclusion for capital. The fire station roof for $90,000, and the library heating, ventilation, air conditioning units for $110,000, for a total of $200,000. The roof, I believe, Steve, is 25 to 30 years old?
Yeah, more than that.
More than that?
Yeah, the fire chief said that it was there when he started working, was it 40, 40 years ago?
Yep.
Certainly at end of life.
And the library HVAC over the past several years, I think it's four years, just in maintenance cost of loans to keep that running, have, we've spent about $22,500, if I remember that number correctly.
And that's maintenance cost in excess of routine maintenance.
Oh, in addition to?
So that's just us keeping it running.
Right. And we, we all, we all recall that the library is now 18-plus years old. It seems like it was built just yesterday. So this debt exclusion would add approximately $2.50 per $100,000 assessed value, which works out to be approximately $14 or $14 to $15 a year, depending on the median assessed value.
We should consider too, that both the fire station and the library have huge inventories of equipment or books inside, so that we need to protect that?
Good point.
Investment there as well.
Absolutely. So that's, that's the debt exclusion on those two capital projects that we're proposing for a vote, which is a two-thirds majority on a debt exclusion.
I just got, just got an update. The roof is actually 59 years old.
The roof is 59 years old?
On the fire, yep.
We've gotten our money's worth out of that. Susan?
Hi. This is, this is a real thorn in my side, the fire station roof. The reason it is, is because we keep having to spend more money because we have lower garage doors than your normal fire station. So I don't know why we're spending money to replace the roof when in fact we should be raising the roof to accommodate the fire engines that would be approximately a quarter of a million dollars less when we buy a new one than they are now, because they wouldn't have to be specially made. So can someone explain me why we're putting a new roof on something that is, is? By roof, I mean shingles and underlayment and whatever. We should be raising the roof so that we can accommodate taller fire engines.
You know, I'm going to, my, my response to that, Susan, is probably not a very good one. I don't think we've had discuss, with FinCom, let me put it this way. Finance Committee has not had discussions or had any presentations to us about a major reconstruction of that building. And I? building, and I know very little about that, other than to say, I would guess that the cost would be quite substantial. But we have not been presented, Susan, with any plans for such a building project.
Well, to raise the roof would be expensive, but if you look at the cost of two fire engines sitting in there, and together they're half a million dollars more than raising, than a normal fire engine would be, it just doesn't make any sense. And I've been talking about this since 2006 with Jack Wilhelm, so it's been a while.
If I can interject.
Sure.
So it's not a matter of raising the roof. What you're talking about is reconstructing the entire police, the fire station, as that roof is actually the concrete floor for the floor above. So as a practical matter, to change the height of your concrete floor, which is the ceiling of the fire station, is enormous and practical. You're talking about rebuilding the entire building into, as we've seen in other projects, you know, who knows, $10, $20 million. So it's a historical thing that we're stuck with until we decide to go through the enormous expense of actually building a new fire station.
Okay.
Any other, Joe, any other questions that I...
There are no others, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Article 18, Borrowing Approval for School Fields. Mr. Schoenberger, could you read that, please?
Article 18, Borrowing Approval for School Fields. To see if the town will vote to approve the debt authorized by the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee in the amount of $15 million for the purpose of designing, constructing, reconstructing, making improvements to, and equipping the athletic and recreational facilities located at Hamilton-Wenham Regional High School, 775 Bay Road, South Hamilton, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, provided, however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of the town at an election to exclude from the limits imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, the amounts needed to pay for the town's allocated share of the principal and interest on such debt, and that the total amount authorized to be expended by the Regional School District under the Regional School Committee bond authorization and this vote shall be reduced by any grants or gifts received for such purposes or take any action thereon or relative thereto.
Thank you, Scott. So there's been a lot of discussion about the school fields. Superintendent Tracy has presented to the Finance Committee, for at least twice, he's sent us a lot of information as to the status of the project, the reasons why the project is being proposed as a one-year project as opposed to a phased project, which I know has come up, and the tremendous needs that are required to meet certification at the school for the athletic programs and the school program. 70% of the children, the kids at the high school participate in organized sports. It's recognized by the Finance Committee that $15 million at the outside, the $15 million amount was placed in this article at the urging, not the urging, at the direction of bond council. And the reason for that was to give to the community the total appropriation that's being under consideration. At this point in time, we have several sources of funding. We have the CPC money from Wenham, $400,000. We have the CPC money from Hamilton of $800,000. And last year, the town of Wenham and the town of Hamilton approved a so-called stabilization fund, which is different than their excess and deficiency dollars. And that was approved with the express use of that stabilization fund to begin to fund the initial phases, a phase of this project. And that was $1,697,000 that was placed into that account this current year. In addition, and this is, I don't have anything in writing about this, but my understanding through Superintendent Tracy, that slightly over $1 million has been raised through private donations. So that gets us another four-plus million dollars to offset the 15, which is part of the last sentence of this article. And this vote shall be reduced by any grants or gifts received for such purposes or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Mr. Pulis has a little chart in the back here of a conservative estimate at this point, well, it was early, it was kind of early when we put this together. We didn't have all the information. But Steve, you want to reflect on that, where we are and what that may look, given what we know at this point in time?
So the assumptions that we're using right now is essentially we're going to, we're just taking an estimate of one-third, two-thirds split, where the assessment split varies year to year. And we're saying that net of grants and gifts, so therefore that the total request of $15 million reduced by grants of gifts to be $4.1 million. So the grants and gifts would then, would total 2.698 million. That's using an assumption of $1 million for donations and 1.698 million in the district stabilization fund contribution. And then Wenham's assessment of 4.1 million, so that's the 15 reduced by the 2.69, and then split one-third, two, one-third, two-thirds, would be further reduced by $400,000, which is the Wenham CPC funding. This leaves the estimated amount to be borrowed for Wenham's share only of the project of $3.7 million. The $3.7 million would be borrowed over 10 years. The estimated debt service on that borrowing would be about $456,000 annually. That would result in approximately a $47 per $100,000 assessed value for each household, and that would follow the entirety of the loan, so 10 years, and then it would fall off by way of debt exclusion.
Thank you, Steve. Questions, comments?
There are no hands up.
Five percent.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and address?
Oh, sorry. David Frankel.
Thank you.
Virginia Rogers, has her hand up?
Virginia? Virginia, thank you.
Okay, well, I should probably start the video as well. I'm, I think I'm missing something.
Name and address, please, Virginia?
Oh, Virginia Rogers, 610 Fairfield Drive. And I saw the $400,000 coming from the CPA, and I wonder, under what category of the CPA funding do athletic fields for the schools qualify for CPA funding?
Mr. Woodland, are you still on?
Yes, it's falling under the Open Space and Recreation bucket of funding.
It's a little bit, Virginia, I would equate it a little bit to the same funding of $375 that's been set aside for the West Wenham Playground. Because the fields, yes, they're for the kids who play organized sports, but between the tennis courts and the other playing fields, it's open to the community, so it certainly comes under the community recreation definition.
Mr. Chairman, may I just confirm that? We met with Mr. Tracy, Superintendent of Schools, and he did give us some kind of rough numbers as how many people they see on a regular basis, either using the fields or using the track or the tennis courts, who are not student age. So we felt comfortable that there was, there was usage in that area for those playing fields, and consequently could fit under the same guidelines as West Wenham Playfield.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions, Joe?
That's interesting.
Okay. Any other comments from FinCom or the Select Board on this article? Anything? Peter? All right. That concludes the Finance Committee articles. Mr. Cheeseman?
Yeah, so I'll start off with the non-financial articles, reading Article 19, which is a special act to create an appointed town clerk. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to file with the General Court a petition for special legislation as set forth below, creating the position of appointed town clerk in the town of Wenham, provided, however, that the General Court may make changes of form only to such bill without the approval of the Select Board, and further to authorize the Select Board to approve such revisions requested by the General Court as are consistent with the public purposes of the petition, or take any action relative thereto. And the contents of the proposed act is, "An Act Regarding Appointing the Town Clerk of the Town of Wenham, Section 1. Notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, there shall be appointed in the town of Wenham the position of appointed town clerk. The town clerk shall be appointed and may be removed by the Select Board and shall serve at the pleasure of the Select Board. The town clerk shall have all the powers and duties and be subject to the liabilities and penalties imposed by law on town clerks. Section 2. Upon the effective date of this act, the elected office of town clerk shall be abolished and the term of the elected incumbent terminated, provided, however, that the incumbent holding the office of town clerk on the effective date of this act shall serve for a period of five months thereafter as the appointed town clerk. Thereafter, the appointments to the position of town clerk shall be made in accordance with Section 1. And Section 3, this act shall be effective upon its passage or take their action thereto." So this change from elected to appointed position would go through a vote at town meeting and then off to the legislature to come back. And we made provisions so that, when approved by the legislature, that we would have a transition period where their current elected town clerk would be the appointed town clerk for five months, and then thereafter, we would have a open period for the Select Board to select a new town clerk. The second one...
The second...
Article 20, it also appeals to this situation.
Right, so we have some questions, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I was hoping Roger would come on to and decide, and speak to how he wanted to present these two similar articles before we broke them down.
Is Roger still on?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, if you might describe what possible process there would be, given that these two similar articles but slightly different, would, we have these sequence, but what would occur if one passed or the other failed in different sequences?
Or if I may, how would, how will this be presented to the meeting, is my question.
So I'm able to answer Diane's question. Gary, unfortunately, your question opens up any number of permutations and possibilities that I simply can't predict or address here. In current form, these two articles will proceed as presented in the warrant book. We will have any motions brought forward under Article 19, presumably by a member of the Select Board, and then we'll see what happens on the floor. As of right now, I have no information from the lead petitioner that she does not intend to make a motion under Article 20. Given the fact that there is no guarantee that the proposed special act will be passed by the General Court, I don't think necessarily passage of a motion under Article 19 approving it as written precludes action on Article 20. Obviously, there's different timing considerations and procedural considerations, but theoretically, in my mind, the town could vote favorably on both articles, essentially using Article 20 as a backstop should something go wrong with the special act proposed in Article 19. That's about as far as I can kind of get in terms of predictions and permutations without having more information from the petitioners on what they intend to do on the floor of town meeting, or what else any other voter may intend to do with respect to action on Article 19 once a main motion has been made.
Thank you, Roger.
Trudy Reed.
Trudy, name and address, and go ahead.
Trudy Reed, 53 Totsfield Road. I think this is a question for Roger, and I'm sorry, Roger, I'm not sure if you answered it or not. If Article 19 passes, can a, can the petitioner from Article 20 make a motion for Article 20 to be passed over?
So a person can always make, or I should say, a registered voter can always make a motion to take no action on an article. That's essentially what Town Meeting Time calls a negative main motion. Commonly, it's, you know, called a motion to pass over. It's not quite the best, pass over is not the best terminology, and it's not the one that Town Meeting Time recommends for a number of reasons that I won't get into here, but yes.
I'm sorry, I meant to use take no action.
Yeah, exactly. As with any article, a motion to take no action is always appropriate as a main motion.
I understand, but I just wanted to clear it up that because it's a petition, that would also be eligible for that.
Yes, so there's, once the article is placed on the warrant, there is nothing special about a citizen's petition as it relates to action on the floor. The statute is solely covering the process of getting an article onto the warrant. Once it's there, it's treated on the floor, just the same as any other motion. As a matter of tradition and courtesy, common practice is to allow the lead petitioner to make the first motion under a citizen's petition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Susan, name and address again and question?
I just have one question. I see that the Select Board voted two to one. Can you tell me which Select Board member is the one?
Susan, you got to name your address first, please.
Oh, sorry, Susan Mailin, 18 Burnham Road. How did, how did the vote split?
I'll be, I'll be the one. I'll be the one. I say no on this. And to explain my reasoning is whether the town decides to go to an appointed town clerk versus an elected town clerk is up to the town. I don't recommend using the special act to do so. I feel as if it takes away the opportunity for every registered voter to vote on this change in government status. I also think it happens sooner, it is a quicker way to do it, to go through the legislature. It still takes about a year, but it's going to take quicker than the year plus an election. So I think it's important to have the special time for members of our town to think about it, and I also like to give everyone the opportunity to vote on it.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
We should read Article 20, though. Peter, you want to do that?
Sure. Can you hear me? Article 20. Citizens' Petition. Conversion of Elected Town Clerk to Appointed Town Clerk pursuant to General Law of...
Chapter?
Chapter 41, Section B, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 1B, to make the office of the town clerk a position appointed by the Select Board, provided that a... appointed by the select board, provided that approval of this article is accepted by a vote of a majority of the voters at the twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting and at the twenty-twenty-four annual town election of April twenty-twenty-four on the following ballot question. Shall the town vote to have its town clerk become an appointed official of the town? Yes, no, or take any action relative thereto?
Any further questions on nineteen or twenty?
Go ahead.
All right. And Diane, you want to read Article twenty-one?
Didn't I recommend this one to two? Was I the sole vote on this one, too? Just out of curiosity.
Twenty, yes, right.
Right, but it says two to one, but I think it was one to two, I was the one.
No, I think it was, Gary was the one.
Oh, Gary was the one?
Yeah.
Oh, you were the one negative? You were...
I lost my nerve, I screwed up.
Oh, okay.
We rewatched the tape, and they were both two-one.
Perfect, sorry. No need to doubt, ever. Election twenty, Article twenty-one, election of officers, to choose the following officers and bring in their votes on the following ballot questions. Board of Assessors, one position, three-year term. Board of Health, one position, three-year term. Select Board, one position, three-year term. Hamilton-Wenham Regional Library Trustee, one Wenham position for a three-year term. Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee, two positions for a three-year term. Housing Authorities, one position with a five-year term. Planning Board, one position with a five-year term. Water Commissioner is one position with a three-year term, and Town Clerk is one position for a three-year term. There are three ballot questions. Question number one, shall the town of Wenham be allowed to exempt from the provisions of proposition two and a half, proposition two and one-half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the town's apportioned allocable share of the bond issued by the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District in order to design, construct, reconstruct, make improvements to and equip athletic and recreational facilities located at the Hamilton-Wenham Regional High School, seven-seventy-five Bay Road, South Hamilton, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. Question two, shall the town of Wenham be allowed to exempt from the provisions of proposition two and one-half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay costs of purchasing and equipping new and/or replacement capital items for various town departments, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto? Question three, known, known as three to five, shall an act passed by the general court entitled "An Act Expanding the Select Board of the Town of Wenham" be accepted? Summary of the act, this act provides for the size of the select board to increase from three members to five members. If approved, the town will hold a special election to elect two additional select board members.
Any question on twenty-one from the audience?
There are no hands raised.
May I make a point to Diane? Just a point of clarification for all of us, if on, let's see, question one, if that question, if, if the Article eighteen isn't passed and voted at town meeting, then it does not go to the ballot, is that correct?
Well, it's on the ballot. This has happened to us before because we do them both together. The ballot question is on the ballot, but if it does not pass at town meeting, I don't think the ballot vote is valid.
In any case, it's also both town meetings, as this is the debt exclusion for the school fields, so it has to pass Hamilton town meeting, Wenham town meeting, Hamilton ballot vote, Wenham ballot vote.
So it's got four...
And if four fails, then the entire item fails.
I just wanted to ask that, so we're all clear on the visiting folks are clear on that as well. Thank you very much.
And Article two, you know, although it's the verbiage there, it relates back to the previous article for our town.
That's right.
Funding of the two-hundred thousand.
All right. So any other comments, questions from the select board?
None here.
All right. Any questions from the audience?
Sir?
No, so over to Jim. Thank you, everyone. I will call for an adjournment of the finance committee to adjourn our joint meeting with the select board at eight forty-three P.M. Here a second.
Second.
Been seconded by Jeff. All those in favor, I...